Member Jordan. Member Baez.
I have to say.
Member Purdy. Member Timmons.
Present.
Member Scott Roundtree. Member James. Member De Silva.
Here.
Vice Chair Wycher.
Here.
And Chair Richardson.
Here. Want to get started, we want to start with the uh. Extensions, we have two extensions, so let's just go from the top. Uh CPB. CPB twenty-one dash thirty-five fourteen Avon Avenue. Party applicants available. This is for one year extension. Alex, you don't see them?
I I.
Here's this.
Tried to promote them to panelists.
Four eighteen Avon Avenue.
Uh JJ in the attendees list, I tried to promote him to panelists, it said he declined, okay, here, he declined again. I'm gonna allow, I'm gonna allow him to talk.
I'm sorry about that, I'm going to Zoom, hi. You hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm for four eighteen Avon, I'm the contractor.
Correct.
Okay, Mister, uh sir, uh please raise your right hand.
I raised.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give shall be truthful?
Yes.
Please state your name and your affiliation to this application.
My name is Yakov Kaufman, I'm the contractor at the GC for four eighteen Avon, that's four to eight homes LLC.
Okay, um is the owner of the property available?
No, he's in, he's a teacher, too late.
Okay, and what is your reason for asking for a one-year uh extension?
So I was working on, I was working for a construction loan, I got approved like. A month ago, and I'm ready for shovel-ready, I'm just waiting for the extension so I can pull the permits.
And you are authorized by the owner to testify this evening?
Yes.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, I have no further questions.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Coach, yeah, which?
Mister Yakov, can you tell us again what your relationship is to this application?
I'm the contractor at the GC.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Here, no, no, are there any questions or comments for the board?
Um Mister Chairman, if I might, um.
Sure.
I only have part of the uh, the uh, the roll call, we have five commissioners present?
Yes, I do believe that is correct.
Okay, I see.
Yeah. Timmons, Witcher, Silva. And uh Baez.
Gotcha, okay, just double checking, because I didn't see them all on my screen, thank you, and I see that Scott Roundtree has joined us.
Okay, Mister Roundtree is here.
Sorry, Mister Chairman.
Alright. No one from the public wishes to speak? Father?
Uh not at this time.
In that case, I need a motion.
Uh Mister Chair, before you, before you take the motion, let me just, one bit of housekeeping on this, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um I'm looking at the agenda, it says this application was approved in August twenty twenty-one. Um the applicant seeking a one-year extension. The period of final approval lasts for two years, so August twenty twenty-one would get us to twenty twenty-three. Uh is, is the app, August is only less than just about two months from now, is that gonna be enough time? We have a one-year extension through August sixteenth twenty twenty-four, just what. Would rather we address that than had the applicant come back at the course again in six weeks, eight weeks, if that were the case.
Mister Yakov?
Yes.
So you, you, you're ready to go uh and by August?
I have all the paperwork ready to give into the city, the waters approved already, everything ready, just need approval from the board and give again for permits.
Okay.
So one year is sufficient, so your extension will be through August sixteenth of twenty twenty-four, and you will have what you need to move forward, is that correct?
Uh I hope to have a seal by then, if everything goes smooth.
Alright, gonna give you a chance. Can I get, I need a mover and a sec.
Chairman, Chairman, I got a question. I, I don't understand, I don't understand, they have only two August, why do we need to approve it now, can they wait?
No, because they, they need the extension, because the last extension they had ran to twenty twenty-three. So they need to get this extension now, so they can be covered to August twenty twenty-four.
Oh, okay, 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 thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Move it, brother Chair. Nobody else has it.
Move by Commissioner Roundtree.
Second, I got you.
Second by Commissioner Baez, roll call, Mister Secretary.
I have a question if I can still ask.
Who is it?
JJ. What is your concern?
I'm sorry, sorry, August twenty twenty-four needs to be the permit inside, or it's gotta be finished construction, I got confused.
I told August twenty twenty-five. I gotta go.
The, the, the permits need to be pulled after the permits are active, as long as you do not stop work and let those permits lapse for a period of time. As long as you don't have to go back for new permits essentially. If you begin a project by August, you'll be covered.
Right.
So now is June, July, and August is till the end of August, correct? So depending on who it's for. Till the sixth.
August sixteenth.
Got you, no problem, I'm gonna work on it, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for leaving, thank you.
Alright. Commissioner Baez. Commissioner Baez.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner De Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree.
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Go Chair Wycher.
No.
Chair Richardson.
Yes. Your extension has been approved, get it done by August. Have a good day. Let's go to CPB twenty-three dash thirty-two, which is two thirty-seven dash two forty-three South Street, Mister Sauer.
Hi, good evening, my name is Calla Paltin, I'm an attorney at South Chicago Village Law Group. On behalf of the applicant, um we're requesting a two-year extension for the subdivision, minor subdivision approval. That was uh received on uh July twenty-fifth.
So you're looking, uh this is Dan Beckwood Counsel, so you're looking for a two-year extension, not a one-year extension?
Um. Correct, that would be twenty twenty-two through July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two through July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, we're ready to go. We just needed to close the underlying uh transaction. So the paperwork just needs to be submitted now.
Alright, so that'll bring you up until, we're gonna pull you permits by July twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four?
Uh it's a minor subdivision approval, so we need to.
That's right, that's right, every mine, okay, okay, so it's a two-year extension, that's what we got to do, okay. Very good.
Board, any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Coach, yeah, which?
Thank you, Chair Richardson, on the agenda is.
Recording in progress.
Yeah, if anybody has any questions, Mister Gary, the engineer is here.
Let me, let, let, listen, listen, let me do my job, alright, you've done yours, so allow me. Board, any questions or comments? Here we go, are there any questions or comments from the public?
So moved, yeah. Not at this, no, no questions from the public at this time.
Move by Commissioner James, your second.
Well, this is, this is in adjournment, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Second of all, German.
Cool, okay. We'll see you August fifth, and your notice needs.
And in my letter, I did consent to an extension of time for the board to act to August thirty-one twenty twenty-one.
Let's move to CPB twenty-four dash sixteen, which is two seventeen, that's two twenty-five Fourth Street, this is also in adjournment. Miss Corillo Perez.
Oh, what's wrong with my phone?
What's wrong with you, mama?
Oh, sorry. It just went mute for a minute. Did you call my name?
No, but it all muted.
Thank you.
Miss Perez.
Good evening, um this is Rebecca Mariello, I'm here on behalf of Jack the Fred.
Okay.
Uh good evening, members of the board, my name is Rebecca Mariello, I'm an attorney at Conal Foley, and we're here tonight on behalf of. Two-two, two-two-five Fourth Street LLC, the applicant with this application. We were respectfully requesting an adjournment to the next available hearing date, um so the applicant has some additional time to address. Uh reports from the board's professionals.
Okay, um. And it's a win sometimes.
Oh, no worries, uh the next available hearing date?
Mister Barry.
Uh the next available date is uh July twenty-second. And then we've also got August fifth available.
Um, let's do August fifth, because I think one of my architects went on vacation, I just wanna make sure they have sufficient time.
August fifth, and your notice will be the third, we'll see you there, have a good evening.
Thank you very much, have a great evening, everyone.
Alright, let's move to. CPB twenty-four dash fourteen.
Uh Chairman, I do believe we had one additional adjournment.
Okay, which one, one of them is?
Uh for seventy Broadway, twenty-three dash fifteen.
Yep, you're right. CPB twenty-three dash fifteen seventy Broadway, thank you. Mister Broadway.
I'm, I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand for seventy Broadway.
Alright, we'll move on, they come back on, they appear, we'll check if they come up yet. Now, let's go to. CPB twenty-four dash fourteen, which is. Two forty-eight Broadway.
Good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the board, Jason Tuvell, attorney for the applicant, how's everybody? Good. Alright, um we're here this evening for the site located at two dash twenty-eight Broadway, block four, two lot two. It's a preliminary and final major site plan application um with C variances. Um as the board may be aware, this is the current site of the Burger King. Um which has been there for quite some time, I actually used to pass it every day on my way to law school, Rutgers Newark. Um so it's been there for at least twenty-five years, that's my recollection. Um the goal here is to redevelop the site. With a new fast food restaurant, but being a Chick-fil-A, and being in the same roughly configuration as the current Burger King on, on the site. Um the Chick-fil-A proposal, other than signage, will be improving many of the existing non-conformities on the property that exist today, it's been demonstrated. Um by your planner's letter. Um in addition to that, we still comply with lock coverage, we comply with parking, we comply with many of the setbacks that are being, that are part of the uh, the zoning ordinance for this application. The application also improves stormwater management significantly, lighting, landscaping, building aesthetics, as well as pedestrian and vehicular access. Um to the site. As I can say, from the, from the start, from the start, we have, take no issue with any of the um items set forth in your board engineer's review, review letter, or your board planner's review letter. So we should be good there, in addition, we will have a cross-access to the property right next door, as you're aware, this property is on a curb. And we do have an adjacent multifamily dwelling across, right next door, and we will have cross-access, and we work that out with the property owner um adjacent to us. So Mister Chairman, I have four witnesses that I plan on calling, I have the Chick-fil-A operator, I'm John Martinez. I have our site engineer, Vincent Kelly, I have our traffic engineer, Patrick Downey, and I also have our professional planner, John McDonough. So unless you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to call our first witness.
Let's get your first witness sworn in.
Okay, so our first witness will be John Martinez from Chick-fil-A.
Hey. Good evening, everyone.
Martinez, you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give to this board shall be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, please state your name and your affiliation to this application.
Sure, it's John Martinez, M A R T I N E Z. I'm a development manager with Chick-fil-A, been in that role for about uh ten years now, but I've been associated with Chick-fil-A since uh two thousand and one.
Thank you. So, uh John, why don't you start by giving a brief overview of Chick-fil-A, and then we can go into the operational characteristics of the proposal?
Sure, sure, I'll, I'll give everyone a thirty-second uh history lesson here, so Chick-fil-A was started in nineteen sixty-eight. By the Kathy family down in Atlanta, Georgia. Um they opened in a mall, and so about for the first twenty years or so of Chick-fil-A's existence, they essentially expanded in malls, got to about three hundred mall locations. Uh and realized they needed to uh come out of the malls and come and develop some free standards. So in the late nineteen eighties, they started building free standards. And uh as of, as of now, as of last year, we just opened our three thousand restaurant uh here in the United States, as well as including uh Canada and Puerto Rico. So the Kathy family, uh. The Kathy family owns um Chick-fil-A. Um they developed the sites, they, they choose the locations, they uh, they pay all the hard and soft costs, but when they're ready to open. They'll team up with a local franchisee, uh we call them store operators, to actually run the, the store. Uh that individual is chosen, or is announced, uh closer to when we're actually ready to uh go under construction, so. The person here for Newark has not yet been uh determined with who they are. Um but uh historically, Chick-fil-A receives somewhere in the neighborhood of about fifty thousand people a year that apply to become Chick-fil-A operators. Of that, we, we take about fifty, so you can imagine, it's a, it's pretty tall, uh pretty tall odds to become a Chick-fil-A operator. But really, they're looking for uh operators that have a connection to the community, and will be able to serve that community, it's very important for Chick-fil-A and Chick-fil-A brand. That we have a, a very local connection. Um Chick-fil-A, while we choose the, the operator, the franchisee, all the other hiring decisions are made by that local uh, uh that local franchisee, the operator. And so making sure they have the right individual that knows what the community needs is very important to us. Uh that uh operator will choose somewhere in the world. Hire somewhere in the neighborhood of about um ninety to a hundred uh team members. At that location, uh realizing they're obviously not all there at once working, they have somewhere in the neighborhood of about twenty-five folks that'll, that'll be there while the store is in operation.
So John, that means during the peak hour, your busiest time, you have twenty-five employees, correct?
On, on-site, that's correct.
But ninety to a hundred overall or higher?
That's correct, so that, that, of that ninety to a hundred, generally about half are part-time and half are full-time uh employees. Um this particular site, um well, I, I can tell you, we've been looking for a long time to be in Essex County. And excited, excited that Newark's gonna be our first entry into, into Essex County. So um this site um is being designed with what we call the latest and greatest technology um to, to operate. Uh both the kitchen and the uh, the drive-through lane and our third-party delivery capabilities. So um the, the delivery method of drive-through and third-party has become very uh common in the uh, in, in the recent uh few years, probably starting about two thousand and nineteen. Um we started noticing a, a big increase in that, and certainly COVID um really uh extended that.
So Mister Chairman, just if it's okay with you, uh we're gonna obviously have a civil engineer testify, but I feel like it'd be helpful when Mister Martinez is going through operations. To have the site plan up for the board and the public to see, so could we mark this as A-one, is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you, alright, so John, when you're referring to this, just note that you're referring to A-one, that's all.
Great, thank you, Jason.
And this is a colored rendering of the site plan, correct?
Uh that's correct, colored rendering of the site plan, uh including landscaping.
Okay.
So um you know, with a, with a very large residential and, and university and, and office um component uh here. Um Chick-fil-A um has, has determined based on our experience, that there will be a very large um takeout component. Of our food at, at locations such as this. Uh whether that takeout component consists of third-party delivery, like an Uber Eats or DoorDash or someone like that. Or um it's, a, a customer has Chick-fil-A on their phone, and they mobile order and come pick it up. Either way, uh we would anticipate that being the vast majority of the business that's, that's done here. Um the uh, there are other ways to get um, to get food here, so if, if I could, I'll, I'll just kind of run through them, so. Um when folks enter off of Broadway. Uh and if, if they wanna uh park and, and go get food in the window, there's um about twenty-nine or so parking spaces in that main parking field where the hand is right now. And those folks would be able to park their car and then walk up to the uh, to the building for walk-up window, that's located right where the hand is, it's kind of on, on the plant south here side. Um where you'd be able to place your order and, and pick up your food. Um there's a full, full menu board, this will have, have a full offering of all Chick-fil-A products at this location. There's also um bathroom facilities for folks as well, uh here for both, a men's room and a ladies' room as well. Um it is our expectation that um the third party, that the Uber Eats, the DoorDash's folks of the world, will be parking, I'll say on the, on the, on the right, uh left-hand side, excuse me. Of, of it, and uh there's about twenty-two spaces over there that are very easily accessed through our, our uh, the uh, the, through the team members to the door. So Jason, if it's all right, I'll just kind of describe the cross-axis we have right now, since we're in that area. So you can see on this line, there's, there's a property line that's between ourselves and the uh recently constructed residential apartments that are there. So that, that drop, that line kind of goes up the, the drive aisle. So we share a common drive aisle with that residential folks. Our parking stalls are our parking stalls, they're on our property, the residential's parking. Our parking stalls are our parking stalls, they're on our property, the residential's parking stalls are on their property, it's theirs. Um, and so we do have a cross-access, uh, on that, on that easement, on that drive-on. There is a gate, so if you go, um, to the, the location where the hand is now, kind of on the north side. There is a residential gate that will not allow our customers to go into the residential, however. Uh, the residential folks can come through into our parking lot. And there is a crass, cross-access easement across our lot out to, um, Broadway. So that's been worked out. We've had a very good, um, working relationship with the property of that facility. Um, again, the other, uh, option here is for customers that enter off of Broadway to use the drive-through. So they would, um, make that, come into our site and make that immediate right into, uh, either lane, there's two lanes of drive-through. Um, and either one is fine. Once they enter one of the lanes, they will not have to, to, to merge or leave that lane until they have their food. Um, so they would, uh, trend, uh, go towards the, the, the left. And, um, there's a, uh, a large canopy that has ordering stations, static ordering stations. But really, where Chick-fil-A kind of differentiates ourselves is that we also, also have team members outside with iPads. Uh, taking, uh, customer orders. So when it's, uh, when, when times are busy, they're out there, um, you know, making sure that, or, uh, the customers have the correct order, explaining our, our offerings. Uh, taking payment, taking credit cards, we can also take cash out there as well. Um, and essentially, uh, we get their orders in, in a very efficient manner into our kitchen. Uh, the customers would then actually place order, would drive around. And as they drive down, there's a, a second canopy you come to, that's, uh, what we call the meal delivery canopy. And so as they approach and as they're under that canopy, uh, other team members would actually deliver the food directly to the cars in both lanes. So this is something that we rolled out right before COVID, so about five years ago, we were testing it. And, uh, when COVID hit, um, boy, the, the stores that had this really were able to provide a really nice seamless, um, customer experience. Uh, for drive-through folks.
And John, the queue that you have here goes above and beyond what you typically see on average?
The queue, yeah, oh, yeah, the, the queues here are in the mid-thirties. So this is, uh, certainly sufficient for what we, we see in New Jersey, even looking at the highest volume locations in New Jersey.
Okay.
That's correct.
You want to speak to hours of operation and days of?
I can. So, um, the store is open, uh, six, six-thirty in the morning, we do serve breakfast. So, uh, chicken for breakfast is pretty awesome, um, and, uh, definitely a southern thing, but it's definitely becoming more and more popular in New York. And we close at ten o'clock at night, uh, and that's Monday through Saturday, we are closed on Sundays.
Okay, and then how do you handle, um, deliveries, John?
Sure, so we do get, um, deliveries, um, a few times a week, typically about four to five times a week we'll get deliveries. Um, those deliveries occur after hours, so when the store is closed. Uh, the delivery truck would come in off of Broadway, would park, uh, generally where that, the rear of the building where the hand is. Um, those trucks actually have two engines on, they're both engines get turned off. Food is brought into the, uh, Chick-fil-A and, um, the, the, the drivers have a key, uh, to get in, you know, to. The drivers have a key to get into the buildings, the buildings closed, no, no one's on-site when this happens. Uh, they, uh, deliver the food and then the truck, um, basically would, uh, back up and then leave out onto Broadway. And that, that did get incurred overnight.
Okay, and then can you speak to trash and recycling pickup?
Sure. Um, so our trash enclosure is located at that, at that dead-end aisle there. It's a, uh, facility, it's a, it's a fully brick, uh, facility, it's got, uh, about eight foot, little eight-foot-high brick walls on three sides, with doors on the front. It, it contains a trash dumpster and a recycling dumpster. Um, that gets emptied, uh, the trash gets emptied, uh, we start it every other day. But if there's a demand, we can certainly have trash emptied every day. That usually occurs, um. When the store is open, but really early in the morning. So typically, it's about a seven to eight o'clock in the morning when that trash truck comes. Um, again, that's probably our least busy time on-site, so it doesn't affect any of the operations. Uh, and in recycling, we recycle cardboard, we also recycle, um, oil, cooking oils. But the cooking oils are actually kept inside the building, um, and there's just a, uh, nozzle that the, the truck hooks up to, 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 to. Take, take that material and cardboard's picked up as needed.
All right, and then, John, I also want you to talk about property maintenance, how do you maintain the property from landscaping to making sure that it's kept clean of any debris? Um, and also onsite security?
Yeah, well, so, um, extremely important for us that our facilities are well-maintained. Uh, when we choose an operator, uh, I think it's, it really starts with that individual, and just so it's very clear. Chick-fil-A, unlike other franchises, they, they don't give multiple stores or, or territories to operators. Essentially, when you become an operator, you get one location, that's it. Hundred percent of your income's gotta come from the store. And so that individual is highly motivated to make that facility, uh, as, as well-maintained as possible. And so as part of that, uh, here specifically, we'll have trash, um, receptacles outside for any customers that eat or could dine with us on the exterior. We do have about thirty-six seats outside. Um, there is a, a team member, a team members, that part of the responsibility is to walk the site, uh, typically that's done about once in an hour. They check those, those, uh, garbage dumpsters, they walk the perimeter. Here, this particular location is, is really set up well, uh, for that, because, uh, we do have the decorative fence that's pretty much wrapping this, this site. And so, uh, if there is any trash that customers, um, discharge, we'll be able to, uh, make sure we pick that up and take care of that. So that's, that's, uh, that's priority number one, uh, uh, daily, just to walk the property, get trash, really hourly.
Okay, and then in terms of when the building is, is, um, closed, do you have onsite security lighting, um, and cameras on the site, correct?
We do, yeah. So there, there is a security system that we have in this facility, includes, uh, you know, all sorts of alarms as, as well as cameras. That's correct.
Okay, is there anything else you wanted to add in your testimony before we bring the civil engineer up or answer any questions of the board or the public? They have?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, as I said, we'll also have, um, testimony from other witnesses, both civil and traffic, but I wanted Mr. Martinez to go over the operational items.
Commissions, any questions or comments?
Mr. Traffic County, you got a good hand, right?
Mr. Traffic County. Let's bring him in, Mr. Beck.
Mr. Traffic County, you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give to this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you, just identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm Mr. Charles Traffic County, I'm a principal engineer and a professional engineer. I'm the employment of the City of Newark, Department of Engineering, license is active and in good standing. I don't know, Mr. Martinez, if you can answer these questions, if not, I'll save them, but let me ask. The engineering report to the board is May twenty-eighth. Again, I know you testified, but just for the record, you're saying deliveries will be made at night? And the restaurant is closed?
That, that is correct. They, they would be, uh, made, uh, a- after the restaurant closes at ten. So, so typically that occurs somewhere between, uh, midnight to five AM.
And how frequent? Every night, every other night? How many times?
Yeah, I would, I would say it's, uh, it really depends on store volume, but, but typically, uh, we start with four times a week. Um, and if, if, if the need be, we'll increase that.
Four times a week, and is there a proposed loading zone on-site? I mean.
No.
Time to get deliveries, is it a forty-foot tractor trailer?
So, uh, no, there is no specific loading zone, um, so the, the truck, uh, will, it, it's a, it's a tractor trailer, I believe, it's a WB fifty, so that's a forty-foot trailer. Uh, when it pulls on, it would pull into the, uh, the parking, the spaces behind the building, unload, they'd walk the material in. And then it would be able to back up and, and leave.
Right, so.
Well, actually, my, my engineer just is showing the, um, the loading plan and the deliberate plan for that truck.
This is all gonna be unloaded by hand, no forklift, no, nothing like that?
That, that's correct, so it's unloaded by, by hand, that's correct.
Yeah, and John, again, you're doing this when the, when the, when the business is not in operation, correct? So no cars in the parking lot.
That is correct.
Another question. All right. The engineers report to the board again, date of May twenty-eighth. These are the items. Okay, item number five, room number nineteen. Site plan indicates a portion of a closed concrete staircase that provides access to and from the project, subject site that falls within the right-of-way for Broadway. Outbound property owners shall provide testimony to the board as to what approvals, easements they have been granted by either the City of Newark or the County of Essex. Allow for these closed, for this proposed staircase to approach the folks' right-of-way for Broadway. And no approvals, nothing for this, engineering department recommends to before the outbound property owner locate this entire staircase. To within the subject lot, since there's room to do so. Mr. Martinez, do you know, if you've been granted any approval, easements from either the City of Newark or the County of Essex?
Yeah, I, I can answer that, Mr. Traffic County, there's, there's no easement. It's an existing condition out there today that we were looking to improve and facilitate for pedestrian access to the property. Um, but we will bring it within the property line, um, since there's no easement, just so there's no, you know, makes it easier.
All right, well likewise, next question, room number twenty, the same thing. Site plan indicates a section of closed handicap access, accessible ramp that provides access to and from the subject site that also falls within the public right-of-way for Broadway. Outbound property owners shall provide testimony to the board as to what it's approvals, easements they have been granted by either the City of Newark or the County of Essex. Allow this proposed handicap accessible ramp to approach the folks' right-of-way for Broadway.
Yeah, si- yeah, same answer, Mr. Traffic County, I appreciate you, you clarifying, yes, we will. Have the handicap ramp, we'll bring it within the confines of the site, improve it as we, as we propose, but that way it's, it's easier and cleaner from a title perspective.
I guess, no, I guess that's what I know. But I guess my last question, Mr. Martinez. My understanding, the only access to your site is a right turn only in, right turn only out off of Broadway. You have no rights for egress, ingress, egress to the property to the south, is that right?
That, that is correct, so right in, right out, um, on the Broadway.
All right, well, I'll save the rest of my questions for your traffic engineer, but I drive this every morning, this is a traffic nightmare. And we all know Chick-fil-A backs off. I'll save the questions.
That, that's fine, my traffic engineer, I, I will tell you though, that in the mornings, this is, uh, that's the least busiest time of Chick-fil-A, so. Um, we just, we don't, don't have a lot of business in the mornings, just historically.
It doesn't matter, that's backed up with traffic going northbound, only up Broadway. And blue, and clay. All right, so for the question, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next witness.
Mr. Chairman, ask one question before, uh.
Absolutely, just about.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Martinez.
Good evening.
Um, the, uh, you, you had mentioned the volume of traffic. Uh, the, rather, the volume of queuing as being consistent with some of the busier stores in the area that you, that you operate or are familiar with. Um, could you just give us an example of another store that you would, uh, identify as one of the busier ones in the, in the New Jersey area?
Yeah, so actually my traffic engineer will, will lay out exactly the, the stores and the, the, those, uh, values, so I'll let, I'll him do it.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to call my next witness?
Next witness. I'm sorry.
Chair, can I, a question?
Oh, Chair, Richard.
Thank you, Chair, Richard. Uh, Mr. Martinez, you spoke about. Selection of operators, um, for the franchise or franchisees for that location. Then the person or persons haven't been selected as of yet, are there any prospective folks, um, in the queue? For example, the folks who are operating the Burger King, do we have any idea?
Yeah, so, so the, uh, the operator, um, whoever wants to be an operator actually goes onto our website and fills out with, with an expression of interest. There's like, I want to say maybe eight questions. Um, and then from that, they, they basically start the process of determining if you would qualify. So there are a lot of operators that are looking for New Jersey, uh, I don't know of any specifically here for Newark, but that's not my role. So I have no say over, over who, who that would be. But they wouldn't even actually officially start looking for anyone just yet. Uh, we want to make sure it's gonna be a, a, a real store first, before we actually, um, spend, spend that time and get people excited to be Chick-fil-A operators. Do a, uh, you know, a kind of a, a very extensive search for folks that have a connection to Newark.
Thank you.
So just a follow-up question, the Chair, you spoke. Hey, someone who has a connection to Newark, what does that mean, a connection to Newark? A Newark resident or someone who lived here thirty years ago? Has family here, what, what does that mean?
Uh, but, a- a- all of the above, yeah, so, so let me, so let me kind of tell you a little, little bit. Because quite a few of the Chick-fil-A operators here in New Jersey, you know, they grew up, uh, moved away, became operators, because first of all, there were no Chick-fil-A's in New Jersey, very, very rare, absolutely. Um, and so, uh, quite, quite a few come back, they have family here, um, they have, they have a connection to the community, they really want to serve the community. And so, um, Chick-fil-A leaves that option open for, for folks. But it's, uh, yeah, they're, they're, they're looking for, for, for that individual, someone that really, you know, is an entrepreneur, but someone that really wants to make a difference, make an impact in that community. And that impact really depends on what the community needs, so there are, there are folks that are very, you know, into, into little league, or into churches, or into schools. Senior house, senior community, whatever that community is, um, that's who they're looking for.
Thank you. Next witness.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my next witness is Vincent Kelly from Colliers Engineering, he's our civil engineer, so, Mr. Beck, if you want to swear him in, and then I can qualify him as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give to this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you, please state your name and affiliation for the record.
My name is Vincent Kelly, K E L L Y, business address one oh one, Fawcett's Corner, Homedale, New Jersey. Uh, I am the site civil engineer, uh, I have been licensed, uh, going on five years now. Uh, I have provided testimony up and down New Jersey, before I was licensed, I testified in Pennsylvania and New York. Uh, my license is current and in good standing.
Mr. Chairman, with the board, accept Mr. Kelly as an expert in civil engineering?
You accept the body of board, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, so, so Vincent, before you get into the proposal, just a brief overview, maybe of some existing conditions on the property that we're improving as a result of the application.
Yes, uh, exactly what you do. So just for the record purposes, uh, the delivery truck circulation exhibit, I marked A-two. It, it was part of the, uh, site plan submission, uh, so it should be on file already, but just gonna mark it A-two anyway. Um. Just give me a second while it loads, uh, I'm gonna mark this A-three. This is, uh, an aerial exhibit of the existing conditions. Um, so you can see what, what the existing site looks like and in respect to the surrounding, uh, roadways and, uh, all of their businesses and everything, uh, in the neighborhood. Uh, just so for some housekeeping items, uh, the existing site is constructed as a Burger King. Uh, with, uh, a single drive-through lane, the, the lot is lot two, lot four, uh, fifty-two. Uh, as mentioned, we, the current site has access via right-in, right-out along Broadway. Uh, and it also actually has, uh, an existing, uh, access agreement, uh, south of the site with the, the neighboring property. Uh, which we've already touched on, that, uh, the existing driveway location along with the, um, the south drive aisle. Uh, will remain the same under proposed conditions. Uh, some of the site improvements that we are, uh, looking to, uh, make here, uh, obviously we're, we're looking to make some. Uh, big upgrades for the, for the site, uh, regards to new curving, new pavement, landscaping, lighting. Uh, those are all vi- visual impacts, uh, that, you know, will really, uh, brighten this hard corner over here, especially with the, the new residential unit next door. Uh, some other i- uh, items that you don't always see on the, uh, on the surface level. Uh, we are improving stormwater maintenance, uh, by, uh, facing a large factor. Uh, and then we are improving pedestrian, uh, access and circulation, uh, along the sidewalk, uh, along there. And I'll, I'll get to those in, in a little bit, uh, so you can see exactly, um, how we're improving everything. Uh, so the site itself is located in a, uh, redevelopment zone. It is the, the Broad Street Station District, uh, specifically Sub-District F. Uh, eighth avenue, uh, within this zone, a quick-service restaurant with drive-through is a permitted use. Uh, so obviously, since we're in front of this board, we are permitted use. Um, as mentioned, we do comply with a lot. Um, as mentioned, we do comply with a lot of the the bulk zoning table. Um, however, there's, uh, a few relief items that we are seeking to. Uh, some of it are kind of due to the nature of, um, the use itself, specifically the fact that, um, we what's required is a zero, uh, setback from the building to the property line. Obviously, with the drive-through, you need to provide, um, sufficient dri- sufficient drive-out around the site, especially when leaving. So in order to do that and not have, uh, folks directly, uh, enter off Broadway. Uh, the building is set back, uh, forty-two point eight feet from the property line. That's basically its its closest corner. Uh, as already mentioned, the existing building of the Burger King is is somewhere in the the same footprint. But we are improving, uh, what the Burger King has out there, uh, as far as front setback at, which is currently sixty-five point four feet.
Yeah, so Vincent, basically, we're bringing that item closer to conformance than what it is today.
Correct.
Okay.
They still in, right?
Alright, go ahead, Vincent.
Okay. Um, the the second, um, relief that we're we're seeking, uh, the minimum building height requirement, uh, within the zone is forty feet. Uh, forty feet for, uh, quick service restaurant is a little bit excessive. Uh, there's no reason to really make it that tall. There's no second, uh, story or anything like that. The proposed building is, uh, about twenty-three feet tall. Uh, and at that height, it's still sufficient to, um, provide enough, uh, carpet so you can hide the the HVAC, uh, equipment on top of the roof. And then, uh, the existing building, again, is, uh, I believe it's sub, uh, twenty-three feet. So we're providing a little bit more height than it it currently exists.
Alright, and so Vincent, if you could just go through impervious coverage, how we're complying with the ordinance, and then explain how stormwater management is being improved on the site.
Sure, uh, I'll get the stormwater a a little bit, um, and I'll touch on impervious coverage as well at the same time. Um, I got a few two more i- items I just wanted to go over first, if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, so as mentioned, we are providing fifty-one parking spaces, uh, within our property. Uh, as mentioned, twenty twenty-nine of them are located, uh, within the building and the drive-through. And then twenty-two are provided, uh, that, uh, front the residential. Everything does have, uh, pedestrian access to get to, uh, the front of the building, should they, um, want to order via the the windows that we're providing. Uh, I do want to highlight that we are providing EV, uh, parking spaces on site, which you could see there, uh, with the two green symbols right here. Uh, they front the 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 drive-through. This does comply with both the state and city requirement. I also do want to highlight that, um, they're not going to be make-ready, so it's not like, uh, you know, these are going to be installed at a later date. During the time of construction, these will be, uh, installed and will be live and operational, uh, as as soon as the store opens. Another relief item we do need is, uh, due to the fact of the existing, uh, uh, driveway connection at Broadway. Existing driveway is thirty-six point five, or sorry, thirty-six point one feet in width. Uh, the max allowed is twenty-four feet. Uh, and we are providing twenty-four feet for internal site circulation. So we do need that on site along with the neighboring property. Just happens that the existing driveway is is a little bit larger. Which is not, uh, the worst considering coming off, um, Broadway and everything just gives people a little bit more room to to navigate as they're entering and exiting the site. Uh, the other relief item related to the driveway itself is, uh, is that the signal? Uh, technically, you need fifty feet, uh, for any signalized intersection. Uh, whereas at at Seventh Ave, it's it's, uh, less than fifty, uh, feet. However, uh, it is also an existing condition. So we went over site circulation. Um, in addition to the the delivery truck and the garbage truck, uh, the the site has been designed to accommodate, uh, emergency vehicles. Uh, the largest one that is going to be anticipated on site is the the city fire truck. Uh, that has been submitted as part of the package as well. Uh, that the, um, the used fire truck within the city can navigate the site, uh, in all aspects, um, should there ever be need to to use a fire. So I just want to go over a few items and kind of, uh, just go over the the canopies a little bit more. Uh, I know Mr. Martinez touched on, uh, the deliver, or sorry, the, uh, the meal order canopy. I just wanted to, uh, to share, uh, an actual constructed photo so you get a little bit more understanding what it looks like and it and its functionality. Reshare my screen. Can everybody see it? They're good, they're good. Alright, uh, so this is as you approach the canopy. There's obviously two lanes, uh, that you can choose, as Mr. Martinez said. You you stay in each lane, uh, for the duration of your order. Uh, this is what the the canopy will look like, uh, once it's all constructed. Uh, this is the the drive-through lane. This, the the center island has striping, so the team members have enough safe space to walk up and down, uh, the lane to take orders, which will be done via iPad. Uh, similarly, uh, on the the left side, the left lane as well. Uh, the curb has been recessed to provide, uh, a little safe, uh, refuge area for the the team members. Again, to walk up and down, uh, to take some orders. So this is, this is what the the actual menu boards look like underneath the canopy. Um, so this, obviously, this is the the, uh, digital menu board. We got everything on the item. These will be, uh, turned on during non-peak hours, and then they will actually be, uh, turned off, uh, during, um, when the employees kind of take the, uh, iPads and the and the orders. And then the the same canopies look basically the same for the the meal delivery, same type thing. Uh, employees will be underneath there, uh, delivering the the food. Alright, um, so I'm going to go back to the A one, which is going to be.
That was the colored site plan, right Vince?
Yeah, the colored site plan. I just need to find it in my. Alright, uh, so as as mentioned, um, we are making upgrades to the site. Um, uh, one of the the larger improvements that we are doing is adding a lot more, uh, landscaping with, uh, trees and and shrubs. Uh, the existing site itself i- is pretty much just constructed with just a few trees in in the the west side of the site, uh, that front the the rear of the property line. And then there's four existing trees along Broadway. So the four trees along Broadway are mature. They're in pretty good shape. Uh, we have designed the site to keep them, uh, as well as enhance the the rest of the interior of the site. Uh, as you can see, along the entire perimeter, we're providing trees and and bushes. Uh, a lot of this will, uh, improve the the visceral aspects as you drive this corridor or as you walk it as well. Now noted in the, uh, there is some, uh, landscape improvements that are noted within the engineering re- review letter that we we plan on fully complying with. There is one item, um, regarding to street trees that we're hoping to get credit for. So you have to provide street trees within the right of way. Um, however, along Seventh Ave, the sidewalk is, uh, constructed, uh, from the, um, the curb line all the way to the property line i- in its entirety. So there's no room to actually put a tree. But what we have put is a a tree basically right behind, uh, the decorative fence that that fronts the entire, um, furnish for the the site, so we're looking to get, uh, the credit for that.
Can you believe that means the spirit of the ordinance, correct?
That's correct. Uh, as me- as mentioned, we are providing a decorative fence that does wrap along Seventh Ave, along Broadway. And then again, at the, uh, uh, Broadway here, what you don't see here is a a like a a retaining wall that's actually associated with the the neighboring property. Uh, that's why it doesn't run there. It just, it cuts into it right there. Uh, this is basically a wrought iron, uh, look. It's four feet tall, uh. It will match actually the building itself, uh, within the canopies in, uh, dark bronze color. So there's one thing, and the next item that we're looking to improve, uh, as I mentioned, is, uh, pedestrian access. So, uh, just give me a second. I can share what the the existing stairs kind of look like.
We'll mark this as A five, Vincent?
Yes, we will. So there is two of these, uh, timber staircases. Uh, one that's right in front of the, uh, the existing pylon sign, and then one a little bit further north on Broadway. Uh, as you could see, it's a little bit overgrown with grass and sediment, as well as the stairs themselves are, um, kind of falling apart. So just going back to to A one real quick, uh, to just highlight where we're proposing. Give me a second. I lost the, uh, the PDF. I think it's the same screen. Panel, sorry. Uh, so the the one improvement we're looking to do, as, uh, mentioned, we are providing a staircase. Uh, sorry, we're replacing the existing staircase, basically in the same spot, uh, but with concrete stairs, with handrails, everything like that. Uh, the second staircase, actually, we are providing, uh, handicap accessibility from the sidewalk. Uh, which you could see here is is, uh, currently designed with a switchback, uh, handicap ramp. Uh, as we're we already mentioned, we will be able to redesign it to to make this ramp fully within our property line. And then the only thing connecting to, uh, the sidewalk is just a basically like a flat landing area. Uh, so again, we are we are improving not only pedestrian, uh, circulation and access, but we're actually providing what doesn't currently exist on site, which is a a handicap accessible, uh, area to the building itself. Uh, the the next, uh, visual impact we are upgrading as well is, uh, site lighting. Uh, so the existing site itself currently is, uh, designed with, uh, some old technology. It used to fall metal halide, uh, really like, uh, darks or like, uh, didn't really comply with dark sky compliant. Uh, what we are looking to replace is all all the lights on site, uh, which a lot of them are on the perimeter of the site, interior to some of the islands. And then again, uh, for the the shared, uh, or sorry, the, uh, parking spaces that are with the shared, uh, drive aisle. These, uh, lights will be LED. They'll be about eighteen feet tall. The color of the poles will be dark bronze, so it'll match the fence. It'll it'll match the canopies. It'll match some of the building, uh, materials as well. Uh, they will be dark sky compliant. There is a a few items, uh, that within the engineering letter that they, uh, asked us to to upgrade, uh, which we can, we can, uh, certainly do, uh, no problem.
And I believe they did recommend the lighting plan that you have with with those modifications you suggested.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we are asking, uh, some relief. So, uh, right now, the the max foot handle within a pedestrian areas, uh, required two point five in some areas. Uh, just to provide enough safety for pedestrians, uh, navigating the site. Uh, we're proposing at seven point six. Uh, and then there's a kind of a technical, next one's kind of technical, uh, at a property line with a, uh, a shared property line with a residential use. The the max, uh, foot handle is zero point five. As you can imagine, since the, uh, the shared, um, property line with the residential is in a drive aisle, you want it adequately lit, so it is above zero point five foot handle. It's no different than what the, uh, the residential unit, um, you know, proposed over here as well. So it 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 shouldn't be the, um, you know, the the requirement for safety, everything like that. Uh, the next is, uh, the light pole spacing. Uh, every light pole is supposed to be, uh, spaced out about forty-five feet, uh, where we have, uh, at twenty-eight feet. Uh, to comply with the height of the the light poles, uh, at eighteen feet, we need to space them out a little bit, uh, different. Uh, otherwise, we wouldn't be able to provide enough adequate light, uh, for the parking lot, pedestrians and stuff like that. Or we would have to go taller, uh, to accommodate that. So we thought it'd be better to meet the height requirement and just put a few more more, put a little bit more, uh, height least space. And then, uh, underneath the canopies, uh, there is lighting as well. As you can see, these, um, these squares, there's three on the order, and then, um, sorry, there's six on the order, and then eight on the delivery. Uh, the lighting underneath the canopies are LED as well. Uh, they are actually recessed, so they're they're flush with the bottom of the canopy. Uh, they're not, uh, hanging down at all. It only directs light directly right there. As you can imagine, with the, uh, team members walking underneath there, taking orders and delivering food, you want it adequately lit. Uh, however, just because of the height of the canopy, i- it's usually a little brighter than some ordinance is allowed. Uh, min- uh, max is a twenty-foot candle underneath the, um, a canopy, uh, where we exceed that.
Alright, and just to be clear too Vince, all the lighting on site, you said is dark sky compliant, which means that the the illumination source source is shielded, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, um, the next thing, um, for this, uh, application, uh, we are introducing, um, some new building signage along with, uh, we're looking to reface the existing, uh, sign that's on site. So if you if you look at my cursor, basically at the, uh, the corner or the intersection of Broad Broadway and Clay, there's an existing Burger King sign out here. Uh, we're not looking to take this down or anything like that. What we're looking to do is reuse the existing pylon sign that's out there and just reface it for, uh, Chick-fil-A's purposes, uh, with their logo.
And so just refacing the existing Burger King, correct?
Correct. Can everybody see see the sign?
We can mark that as A six.
Okay, A six. Um, so as you see in the the lower left-hand corner, uh, the Burger King, uh, sign i- is as you see fit. Uh, we're we're just refacing with the the Chick-fil-A, uh, chicken logo, uh, identifying that they're definitely closed on Sunday, and then the, uh, the message board, um, is almost in the same footprint as what's out there. Uh, what's a little different about this is that this, uh, this message board actually doesn't, um, highlight any, um, specials or anything like that, like two-for-one sandwiches or like, uh, if there's a deal going on. A- as mentioned, uh, Chick-fil-A is very orientated around the community. This is actually a community message board. Uh, so let's say, you know, they, um, they're they're, you know, fu- uh, funding like a a local Daddy Daughter Day dance or, you know, they sponsor a Little League team, you know, they got a big win, stuff like that, that will be identified on the message. So it's it's not business-related. It's it's really, it's community-based. Uh, next, uh, we are obviously proposing some building signage as well. Uh, so we're proposing four four bit, uh, building signs in total. There's one where you can see my cursor is here on the north side of the building. And then the same, uh, exact sign is also located directly above the delivery canopy. This is a Chick-fil-A wall script, um, sign, which I'll I'll show you what it kind of looks like in in real life in in a minute. And then on the face that directly is at the, uh, faces the intersection here, is a is a small icon, uh, building sign that just has a Chick-fil-A logo. And then, uh, basically right next to the order windows is a is a small, um, Chick-fil-A sign as well. So, I'll I'll kind of touch on the uh the bu- what the building looks like uh inside it and so you could also see what the signage looks like as well. Can everybody see that or?
Yeah, we're not on the total, we're not on the building yet, Vince, you gotta, I guess we're try to share it again.
Okay.
Do you hear?
We're good, okay.
So we'll mark this, I think we're A eight or A seven?
Yes, uh A seven, yes. And this is this is a a color rendering of what the building we are proposing will actually look like uh once it's built. Uh, so as you could see, there's really basically uh three or four color schemes that kind of um happen. Uh, at the top of the building, it is basically a khaki co- or sorry, there's a a khaki color on the uh on the on the bottom, there's a a beige building or color on the top. Again, the uh the dark bronze is consistent along with the the door frames on the covered canopies. Uh, along with the, this is what the wrought iron fencing along the the face of um the perimeter of the the front of the site will look like, everything kind of ties in together. Um, obviously with the, this is the the proposed uh building sign for the Chick-fil-A icon. This is also what what you'll look like if you were to walk up and order your your food as well. Uh, on top, you'll see this is where the menus menu items are and then there's uh three separate orders along with the pickup. And then this do- door off to the right will allow team member you know, uh ordered on on the app um and wants to do that. So, one
You want up to the next uh next elevation?
Yes.
Uh, so just give me a second. And and Vince, while you're doing that, all the building mechanical equipment will be screened from you from the from the roads, correct? The parapet will screen it or the roof will screen it?
That is correct.
Okay. And then um I also wanted to indicate just for the record, as Vince is bringing up the next exhibit, that we're we're also gonna work with our adjacent property owner, the residential apartment building um to cover the um the enclo- trash enclosure in addition in addition to the fence that we're proposing with maybe a louver covering or something like that, we we will work that out with them and we've talked to them about that. Just wanted to put that on the record as well. So go ahead, Vince, why don't we show the next angle? So this is, so just mark this next exhibit, just for the record.
This is A eight and this is an actual um photo of what a similar exact replica of the building that you'll see on on what we're proposing. Minus this red that's kind of up top, uh this red will actually uh the uh the exact or the beige color up top will actually carry over to where the red is. Uh, but this is this will highlights what the Chick-fil-A wall script looks like. Where we're we're proposing it here and then also on the the north side of the building as well. Um, I also do want to point out that the uh the building itself, the material will be all correct. Uh, and what uh Mr. Martinez mentioned as well is that the trash enclosure itself uh in addition to being uh a CMU wall, so it's not like board-on-board, you know, it's it's not gonna uh deteriorate, you know, wi- within a short order. The trash enclosure itself actually will have correct and it will it will match uh the building as well. So the site will really kind of tie tie into itself between the the consistent dark bronze for all the the vertical structures and and the building and the trash enclosure um basically being Uh, and then the next item I I touch on is impervious coverage.
Uh, go back to the um site plan then, Vince. We're going back to A one, correct?
Yes, A one. Uh, so we are, so we are slightly increasing impervious coverage from existing conditions. Uh, however, we still meet the ordinance requirement. Uh, or we're we're, yeah, we're way less than the ordinance requirement. However, what we are introducing with the existing site doesn't have uh today is uh mi- uh a way to mitigate uh stormwater. So today, the existing site just has collection inlets and conveyance pipes that basically just go uh they collect on site and then get directly discharged to the existing um combined sanitary sewer and stormwater uh system within Broad. What we what the proposed development is looking to do is actually introduce a few uh methods uh that comply with both both the city and the state is uh great, the parking, eleven parking spaces along Broadway. We're proposing as forest pavement, uh so that will help um mitigate any pollutants or anything like that, surface level. And then underneath, what you don't see is a a large underground system. And then that also ties into an infiltration basin as well. And between both of those, we're able to provide onsite detention, so really hold back a lot of the stormwater that the site produces. Uh, holds it, you know, holds it for uh a long period of time. And then once the the storm subsides, it will eventually discharge the Broadway, but it'll be at a a lot less peak than what currently exists today.
So from overall, from from a s- a stormwater perspective, it's an improvement to not only the site but the surrounding area.
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's all I got for it.
All right, so just just to sum up, Vince, most of the pre-existing non-conforming conditions on the site are being improved, correct?
That is correct.
All right, as we just indicated, stormwater management drainage in the area is going to improve for not only the property but for the surrounding area.
Correct.
You're making significant um improvements to pedestrian access, the sidewalks, as well as uh the the steps going to the building, including ADA.
Correct.
The lighting will be improved to dark sky compliant over what's out there now.
Correct.
And there'll be a significant amount of trees and landscaping added to the property that are not there currently.
That is correct.
All right, and then in terms of the letter that we received from the city engineer, I know you covered a lot of it, but to the extent there was anything that you didn't mention, you'll stipulate to working with the board engineer on all comments set forth in that letter.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I know that was a little a long-winded, but we wanted to make sure we covered everything.
Very good, uh Commissioner, any questions or comments for the engineer?
I had a question or a comment with regards to um stormwater on that property.
Oh, Chair, which?
Thank you, Chair. Um, and I'm glad that you guys um sort of touched on it, but I was just, the question that I had before the last minute or so was will that lot be recreated um and how it would manage the water? Because actually, at this point, there's like a depression in that lot and when there's like stormwater or a heavy rain, it's there.
Correct. Correct, uh so, I I you may have cut out. Uh, how, yes, we we are, everything will be sufficiently graded, uh where there's no more uh ponding, basically. And that we are introducing uh forced pavement with a a large underground system to detain the water as well as a surface-level uh infiltration basin. Those will act in tandem to not only mitigate uh the water on site, but will help alleviate um, you know, some of the roadway as well. Uh, because it will be contained on site.
Thank you.
Boy, any other questions? Oh, I want to note that Commissioner Purdy joined us a while.
I got a comment, Chairman.
Yeah, Commissioner Banks.
Yeah, uh, I'm very happy that that Chick-fil-A is coming actually to the borderline of uh Central and uh North of our center, actually, we need something like that. So if they ca- if it's getting approval, I'm happy with it, we'll have something doing that. Now, my question to uh John Martinez, uh as uh all of the commissioners, we should have it fifty percent off at the when we come to the grand open, huh? Can we? Yes, I can. Mr. Martinez, all of us gonna have it fifty percent off when we come to it up there.
You 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 can come as as my guest in uh for the grand opening and and uh, yeah, it's it'll be on me, so that'd be my pleasure.
Uh, thank you very much, appreciate that, sir, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner, any other questions or comments from you? So since you brought Mr. Martinez back for a question, I have a few questions. I can wait till the end to come back to you, Mr. Martinez, unless you feel good.
Well, what, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman, whatever you prefer. We're not gonna
What's a full-time employee make, are there any benefits?
Yeah, so um a- as far as the uh the rate they pay, that is the operator's uh choice that what they pay. Typically, um to attract the better um uh employee, we do pay more than the a- than the average going rate uh in the neighborhood, just again to um to attract that employee. And as far as benefits go, there there are uh benefits, again, the operator chooses that. But those benefits are are some uh, it could be medical, we do a lot of scholarship benefits for our for our younger folks. That's a real big theme to give some some college scholarship money out, so those are the types of benefits.
And what does a part-time worker make?
Uh, the the part-time, yeah, I mean, again, uh our goal is to 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 get the 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 work, the better workers. And and honestly, it's it's really to try and build uh people, right? I mean, we're we're building a community, um in that there's there's no better reward for for the uh the operator than to eventually train someone to become it and get a get their own store. And so we are we're looking to to do that, as far as the the pay goes, they, even the part-time ones are usually paid more than the than the going rate in the neighborhood is, uh again, just to 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 attract them. Because it's work. John, John, the goal is to keep the employees long-term and and you guys have been successful with that, correct? It it is, yeah, because they they definitely, it's it's hard work doing this work, but um they really see a benefit uh having Chick-fil-A as under the Chick-fil-A umbrella.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just jump in for a second, I we heard a little bit of dialogue that was a little friendly, jestful uh banter previously, Mr. Martinez, y- y- you're not intending on giving any members of uh any discounts to any members of the board, are you, Mr. Martinez?
Uh, we we, I there there'd be no, there's no no uh discounts to um to to board members. It's not gonna happen.
Right, but I just wanted to correct that for the record, it was said in jest, this way there's no issues later on. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I apologize for jumping.
No worries, no, thank you for that clarification. Uh, so another question is, you wanted to get credit for the trees inside of the fence line and how many trees short will it be?
Vince, can you answer that question for the chairman, please?
Sure, uh, so right now, the site is sufficient by nine. We can provide all all eight to comply, but the way the ordinance reads, you need it for every site frontage. So it literally would just be one tree on along Seventh Ave, which we are providing just inside the property. So the intent, yeah, the tent is there, it just doesn't need the fence.
Yeah, yeah, I just Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the sidewalk is just weird in that spot, that's the reason, yeah.
I'll defer to Mr. Barry and see if that's acceptable. I'll have to trigger on the other side. Uh, my last question is, who's gonna build the building? Are we using local contractors or you bringing people from another state?
Okay, that's for Mr. Martinez, can I bring him back, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please.
Sure. Uh, John, you just want an answer what typically occurs?
Sure, so um in New Jersey, we have um three preferred contractors that we use. Uh, based here, New Jersey general contractors we choose. And then as far as these third third subs, the local subs, they um they they choose local subs. So they're they're not bringing folks from, you know, from the south or something, it's all all local here.
Thank you much. Next witness.
What is it?
Do you want the next witness, Mr. Chairman, is our, uh, Mr. Traffic Kenny seems to have a question.
Yes, Traffic Kenny, sure.
Mr. Kelly?
Bring him back, please.
I'm here.
Kelly, in your exhibit, you showed the canopies roughly around nine foot. Is that just for the exhibit or is that what they're gonna be?
That the the canopies have nine feet of clearance, uh it's about another foot tall, oh, it's ten ten feet and change.
Is that enough to get a fire truck underneath?
Uh, we don't need to actually get a fire truck underneath. Uh, in New Jersey, you only need to gain uh fifty percent of the the side of the building to fight a fire, which we we definitely can uh provide.
Well, if there's a fire in the back, whether it be a car fire or a fire in the back of the building, you don't need to get to that with a fire.
They they have sufficient um distance to get to the to the building if it was in the rear. They they can park here, fight it from here, or use the shared drive aisle between uh Chick-fil-A and the residential uh to fight it on all sides.
All right, is there a retaining wall? There's a retaining wall there, I don't know how they they'd be fighting from a lower elevation or from an upper?
It, so it it gr- it gradually goes up, uh but with the ladder that they have, they they would be able to get o- over it uh to fight the fire.
All right. No further questions, thank you.
Okay, all right, Mr. Chairman, uh with your permission, I'd like to call our next witness, who's our traffic engineer, uh Patrick Downey from Dynamic Traffic.
Go, bring him, bring him, let's get him sworn in and some press.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Downey, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give shall be truthful?
I do.
I'll thank you, please state your name and affiliation for the record.
Sure, uh Patrick Downey, D O W N E Y with Dynamic Traffic, traffic engineer for the applicant.
All right, and Patrick, if you could just go through your um qualifications as an expert in the field of traffic engineering, um educational background, licenses held and experience testifying before similar boards?
Absolutely, uh so I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey as well as Pennsylvania. Uh, the bachelor science degree in civil engineering from Whalen University. Certified professional traffic operations engineer and I previously testified before this board uh and other boards throughout New Jersey.
Mr. Chairman, we we request that the board would accept Mr. Downey as an expert in traffic engineering?
So, accept the bottom board, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, so Patrick, why don't you give an overview of the traffic impact report that you provided to the board? I know there were some comments um that we received today that I'd like you to address. So let's go over trip generation, parking, and if you could also speak about site circulation briefly as well.
Yeah, absolutely, so as you mentioned, we submitted a traffic impact study as part of the application, uh and in that, we looked at a couple of factors. First one is obviously the traffic generation of the proposed Chick-fil-A building uh that we are proposing. Uh, and those trips are projected usually utilizing the industry standard rates uh published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, otherwise known as ITE. Uh, you're likely very familiar with them, they're referenced on almost every application that involves traffic engineering. Uh, as part of those uh trip generation projections, we look at a number of factors, including uh the ability for cross-traffic between uh our site and the neighboring residential traffic. Uh, not for public traffic to go back and forth, but for the actual residents of that development uh to access our site without using utilizing the public process. Uh, additionally, just based on the fast food nature of this use, it's a uh convenience-based use, it draws a lot of its traffic and customer base from existing traffic passing the area. Uh, so not all traffic to a site like this, or to the existing Burger King for that matter, uh are necessarily traveling through this area specifically for the purpose of visiting restaurants. A lot of folks are stopping to and from other locations, uh such as home, school, work, et cetera. Overall, looking at the projections uh from the existing Burger King uh to the proposed Chick-fil-A, we're looking at uh one hundred and fifty-five new peak hour trips in the highest of the three peak hours. The peak hours we look at is weekday morning, weekday evening, and Saturday midday lunch period. Uh, just to coincide with the typical peak hours uh of the uh adjacent roadways. Uh, additionally, as you know, uh on Sundays, this particular site would be closed. Next step, uh we perform traffic counts uh to ascertain existing traffic volumes. Uh, we did that in three locations, the two signalized intersections on either side of our site, which you can see pictured here at the top right and the bottom right quarters, as well as the existing uh Burger King driveway. And the final step is to analyze the operation of those intersections uh pre and post-development. So without the Chick-fil-A versus with the Chick-fil-A, to assess uh the difference resulting from the proposed development. What we found uh is that our driveway operates at a good level of service. Uh, the Broadway, Broad and Play traffic signal to the bottom of the screen uh experienced will to no change in level of service and delays. We did identify uh one signal timing improvement that could be made at that intersection uh which would improve the results there in the morning peak hour to actually better what they are today, uh even considering the additional traffic. And at Broadway and Seventh uh to the north of the screen, uh we identified again little to no change uh in operating conditions there from the proposed development and it overall operates fairly well uh relative to the other signal. So we didn't identify the need for any timing adjustments at that location.
And Patrick, so the applicant would work at its own expense to 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 adjust that signal timing with the city's uh professionals, correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Uh, so overall, it's our professional opinion that that traffic study demonstrates uh there'd be little to no substantial uh traffic impact from the proposed development. there'd be little to no substantial traffic impact from the proposed development. It's very similar to the existing use there. You know, it's permitted use in the zone, and it's a relatively modest building size compared to some of the larger buildings that other Chick-fil-A sites are being developed.
And Patrick, also, the site as proposed is roughly, give or take, some minor modifications in configuration as the current Burger King, correct?
Yes, extremely similar. Building in the same location, driveway in exactly the same location, drive-through circulation very consistent. Overall, it's almost the same, you know, site layout, only a few tweaks and a new tenant with upgraded technology upgraded.
And do you also think it's beneficial that the applicant worked with the adjacent property owner to have some cross-access as well?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that cross-access allows the ability for all customers drawn from those residential towers, which would be a substantial component, to get to and from the site without having to burden the existing workers.
Okay. Can you speak to parking on the site as well? And whether you think it's adequate, also the size of the spaces, and the number of E V and A D A stalls?
Absolutely. So the requirement is rather small based on the city standards. It's only about six spaces, which just operationally wouldn't be sufficient for this use. We're proposing as you've heard, 51 spaces. That would be used by a combination of team members, motorists placing mobile orders and picking up food, whether on the Chick-fil-A app or third-party delivery services, as well as customers who park, walk to the ordering window, place their order on site. So based on Chick-fil-A's experience at other locations and our work with them in other locations, we think that's an appropriate parking supply for what's actually required operationally. In terms of the details, size of parking spaces, number of E V spaces, number of A D A spaces, those technical details are all compliant.
Great. And then in terms of the queue length that we have here, is that consistent with what other Chick-fil-A's have? And can you speak to that and whether there's a little bit of a cushion on this site?
Yes, so we have data collected both by our firm and by other traffic engineering firms at Chick-fil-A users elsewhere and other jurisdictions. We've compiled research data for dozens of Chick-fil-A sites at this point to really get an understanding of their operational characteristics, primarily so Chick-fil-A can design their sites appropriately. What we find in New Jersey, queues on the order of 27 vehicles or so, this proposed site plan can stack about 35 vehicles. So more than enough. It's got about a 30% buffer compared to typical queues seen in other locations. To put it in perspective, to one recent site, I know there's questions regarding other sites nearby. One relatively close by site is Union, New Jersey, it's in the median of Route 22. That site can only stack about 17, so it's about half the physical capacity of this location. And the max queues observed there were about 28. So right around that average of 27, slightly on the higher end, but well accommodated with what this proposed site plan can accommodate.
All right, and do you, do you find that the lane width or the drive-through lane width of 10 feet is sufficient for what's being proposed today?
I do. That's corporate standards, particularly does in a lot of locations. Keeping in mind, it's not, you know, adjacent 10-foot lanes. There is a strict buffer area in between that's used for, you know, team members to take orders and deliver food. So there is a little bit more maneuvering space than there otherwise would be with 10-foot lanes. But again, this is low-speed, drive-through, stop-and-go operation. This isn't a public road. It's not even a drive-by or a parking lot. So for that low speed and low intensity, we think that 10 feet is appropriate.
Okay. The driveway, there's only one driveway proposed. You believe that the site distance is appropriate?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And you also concur with Mr. Kelly that a fire truck can properly navigate the site?
That's correct.
And you also agree with Mr. Kelly or Mr. Martinez that the delivery vehicle can properly navigate the site when it's closed to other customers?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. And then in terms of pedestrian access, Mr. Kelly indicated that it's a substantial upgrade than what exists today. Can you speak to that from a traffic perspective?
Yeah, I would agree completely. So we have a number of pedestrian upgrades along our frontage. As you can see, there's new proposed stairs, new proposed A D A ramps to provide compliant paths from the building to and from the public right-of-way that they use to the site. In addition, we have that proposed perimeter fence, which in addition to being a decorative element for its aesthetics, actually improves pedestrian access by funneling all pedestrian customers to and from the proper locations. What you end up with is just two designated crossing locations where you see the crosswalks crossing our central drive aisle as opposed to pedestrians walking up and down the grass, wherever they may choose, and having crossing locations in numerous locations.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions for Mr. Downey.
Jason, do you want me to go through the traffic comments one by one?
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. Actually, Mr. Chairman, you know, before Mr. Traffic Kenny, I guess, asks questions, let Mr. Downey address the comment that he had in his email from today, and then we can, you know, go back and forth.
Oh, good. Please continue. Sure, so there's only five comments, so I'll just touch on each one briefly. Comment number one was questioning whether the traffic counts, they were conducted in July, were appropriate, and whether any seasonal adjustment factors were considered. So the answer is yes, they were considered. New Jersey Department of Transportation publishes seasonal variation data for the whole state, broken down by county, type of road, et cetera. Based on those rates, July volumes are within 1% of average conditions. D O T themselves allows a rate of plus or minus 10%, what they will accept in traffic studies. So we are well within that threshold. So for those reasons, we think these counts are appropriate for the traffic study. Number two is regarding Saturday, whether the Chick-fil-A restaurant peaks, you know, midday lunch period or evening dinner period. The answer is that it's midday lunch period. That's typical across fast food chains. It's also true for Chick-fil-A specifically based on the data that we have. Number three is regarding any potential concern in the weekday evening period between the site and the event centers and the pack and credential center. It's just giving, you know, traffic for those uses traveling potentially through this area. We don't see a particular conflict between this use and those uses at all. They're not particularly proximate to each other. So the traffic influence of one on the other is pretty reduced by lack of proximity. But additionally, Chick-fil-A's traffic is a pretty small percentage of the total that's passing through this area at our particular signalized intersection, you know, to the bottom of the page. The Chick-fil-A traffic represents roughly 5% to 10% of the traffic through that intersection in the proposed condition. So really, nothing substantial, nothing more so than any other public traffic passing through this area. Number four was regarding parking spaces proposed, essentially what their purpose would be. So I'll just reiterate what I stated before. Combination of team members, customers placing mobile orders, picking up their food, the customers ordering at pedestrian walk-up window. All of those users would be able to use those parking spaces. And number five is regarding queues for the entering approach at our site driveway. So with north end to the right on this page, it's the eastbound through and right turn movement at our proposed driveway. Whether queues essentially entering the site would impact the signalized intersection at Seventh Avenue, top of the page. And we don't believe that they would for a number of reasons. Number one, internally, we don't anticipate drive-through queues going to extend back to that location and essentially block anybody entering, just based on the fact that we have so much buffer in the stacking design. Additionally, that's, you know, what we call the major road through and right turn movements. If you're a vehicle traveling straight or turning right into the site driveway, there's no other vehicle you need to yield to. You are the dominant vehicle at that intersection. So there's no delay, there's no queuing associated with that movement. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Downey.
Mr. Traffic Kenny?
Yeah. Our two points, the email from Mr. Savage dated today, one of which is second bullet point, was the Saturday evening count ever considered?
So it wasn't considered based on the fact that the roadway volumes typically peak Saturday midday, and our use particularly peaks Saturday midday. So we analyzed the worst-case peak hour, which would be that Saturday midday.
Nothing at dinnertime, evening? We never expect more traffic?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not to say that the restaurant's not open and operating during those times, but it's typically not at the same level as it is for Saturday lunch on the weekends, lunch is the dominant mealtime.
And I guess the fourth bullet point, okay. Is there any consideration for future dining service basically outside the drive-through, the pickup window, and the six or five picnic tables you show directly from law?
Yeah, Mr. Traffic Kenny, let me let Mr. Martinez answer that. It's more operational, is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I think John would be the better one to answer that. Go ahead, John.
Thank you. Yeah, with regards to indoor dining, or there is surely no plans to expand this for indoor dining. Not to say that's impossible, certainly if ever happened, we would come back. But essentially, a couple of things we found. First is indoor dining, especially at fast food restaurants post-COVID, it has not gone back to pre-COVID levels. It's a significant reduction we've noticed. And this is not just us, it's industry-wide. It's probably more than 25% reduced indoor dining. Secondly, we don't currently have enough parking stalls on the space to satisfy a significant amount of indoor parking. The drive-through operation we have here is pretty sufficient with 51 stalls. We would need somehow to add more parking to do that. And that's not something I would want to answer.
So basically, to answer the question is, the tables outside are for people that may pick up their food as a pedestrian and want to eat it right there. And that you don't really, and there's no plans to put dining in the facility at this time?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Downey, I guess, to recap on the last bullet point. Okay. Was there a consideration using a traffic modeling software that would potentially provide results for the non-signalized intersection? For example, highway capacity software, H C S 2000?
Right, so the analysis in the report was likely using Synchro. And Synchro uses the H C S methodology, the same as highway capacity software for unsignalized intersections. There are 95% of few results reported for the movements that had delays. Just that one particular eastbound movement mentioned doesn't have a delay associated with it, so there is no queue listed because there isn't one.
Two more questions. Your traffic counts, were any of them done on a weekday, like around 7:30, 4:08? Say around 4:08 to 8:30 in the morning on a weekday?
Yes, we have weekday morning peak hour counts, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m.
Outside of the summer? Was there a done?
Not outside of the summer. The counts were done in July, and that's why we referenced the D O T rates to confirm that July was appropriate.
And for the record, there's only one way in and one way out from the site? Just to recap, right? You have no rights to an ingress easement if you join a property. You can only leave, enter and leave from Broadway. Is that correct?
Yes, with the exception of residents of that particular use that we have.
All right, so you can use your property, but you can't use theirs, right?
Correct. So if you live there, you can drive here and drive back because you have the key to the gate.
Was there ever any consideration given for a possible second point of egress? Either to an easement, ingress easement, or joining property? If not, properties to the south, properties to the west? Like million?
So as far as more driveways to public roads, the answer is no. And that's really because the majority of our frontage is under the influence of that traffic signal at the bottom. The one access we have located effectively apart from that signal as possible is really the only appropriate point of access for a site like this. In terms of cross-access, we do have the one connection to our South Line left. But to my knowledge, no other connections were explored. I don't even know that it would be engineering-reviable given the other property we have bought to the West Line top.
I can always say, I drive this every morning. This is backed up a bit. The staging at this traffic. I know you have, what, 35 is it? Spaces for the drive-through, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Was there any consideration given during a heavy, busy day, real busy day? Could that staging back up into the driveway possibly stop traffic trying to get in off of Broadway? Is there ever a consideration given to that?
Sorry, a couple of things I could say to that. Number one is, we don't design to the minimum that we see elsewhere. As I mentioned, we do have a buffer. So I would say that buffer accommodates some atypical peak day if there were to be one. Additionally, there's a lot of team members assisting with the whole drive-through operation from beginning to end, and they have methods at their disposal. You know, one I can mention off the top of my head is they have the ability to encourage a new vehicle entering the site. Instead of using the drive-through, potentially go place an order at the window, because they'll actually get their food faster than waiting through the drive-through lane. So they also have traffic management pool at their disposal to make sure that doesn't happen.
Well, you don't expect this to back out into Broadway?
That's correct.
I think you're in for a rude awakening. I think this is going to compound the problem, but... We're going to have to find out the hard way, aren't we?
Well, if I might, Mr. Chairman, we have to remember that the board can't take into consider off-site traffic issues. We can only pay attention to what's happening on the site. And I think, Mr. Traffic Kenny, we've gone down that road on other applications previously. And Counselor, do you have anything to add to that?
No, that's correct. Heard the Duncan, South Brunswick, North Brunswick, Duncan Donuts case. Mr. Becker, 100% correct on that, yes.
Thank you.
No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our last witness, Mr. Chairman, is our professional...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner, is any questions or comments for the traffic engineer? Here in the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next witness is our professional planner, John McDonough.
The name is familiar. Pat, Mr. McDonough, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes, I do, Counselor.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation for the record.
Hi, everyone, my name is John McDonough. My business address is 101 Gibraltar Drive, Parsippany, New Jersey, and I'm the project planner.
All right. I know Mr. McDonough has testified many times here, but I can go through his credentials, Mr. Chair, if you'd like.
That's not necessary. The license card, what's that?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
We're acceptable by the board, please continue.
All right, so John, in preparation of this application, you visited the site and the surrounding area?
Yes, I did.
All right, and you've reviewed all the plans, application materials, reports? And you've heard all the testimony given thus far?
Yes, I have.
And you've reviewed the relevant sections of the city zoning ordinance, master plan as it relates to this property?
Yes, and the redevelopment plan.
Great. So why don't you give your planning overview of the site, as I know you typically do, and then the justifications for the variants associated with this project?
Okay, so we'll start with the visual lights on the screen here. We're on a prominent corner in the city. Get the corner of Broad and Broadway, a single tax lot. It's got that regular triangular shape. It's about almost an acre and a half, it's slightly under. Single tax lot, block 452, lot number two. And importantly, it is locally familiar as a quick-serve restaurant for nearly 44 years now with the drive-through component. So we're going from one use to the exact same use, just modernizing and rebranding, clearly with operational efficiencies that were not available back 44 years ago when the site was originally developed. The area consists of a mix of residential and commercial uses, including transforming with that Ramilla development all the way to the left there and being adjacent to the site, which continues down Broad Street. We also saw Taco Bell transform the site across the street. So this is going to anchor that corner and continue the positive transformation of the area. That's right on point with the essence of the redevelopment plan with here in the Broad Street Station redevelopment plan, which encourages new uses and uses that will revitalize and add vibrancy to the area around the Broad Street Station, which is exactly what this application is going to do in substantial conformance with all those higher tiers of zoning in the Broad Street Plan from your use requirements to your higher bulk requirements, the overall massing of the site, the lot coverage, the setbacks, all being in substantial conformance with what the plan is looking for. Absolutely no relief related to parking or directly related to traffic per se. We're talking about signs and landscaping and lighting as being the predominant relief that the applicant is seeking here. Mr. Barry has given the board a good list of the relief. We've heard the good predicate of the rationale for why that relief should be granted without any substantially adverse impacts. We're always supposed to look at the application as a whole. So we're going to look at the application as a whole,[1744.02] Um, we're always supposed to look at the application as a whole, so we're going to look at the application as a whole, advancing multiple purposes of zoning here, including purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare with a service use that is permitted in the zone that will revitalize a site that has this exact same land use for many years. Also, the advancement of purpose G, which is to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. Um, again, as we said before, it's the same exact use that's been here for forty years, forty-four years, a modernization of what's been there, and, um, also it's a permitted use in the zone, so absolutely no use relief being sought here. Additionally, the advancement of purpose M, which is our planning goal for efficient use of land with redevelopment of a developed site that is somewhat outlived, that's used for life, and could certainly use an upgrade and a freshening up, which is exactly what the application will do, giving the site a clean, fresh look. And then finally, the advancement of purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. Uh, there's an app, there are absolutely beautiful trees along the frontage now, which will be continued and supplemented. Um, we're going to get new lighting here and an overall new look and appearance to the site as a whole. That goes towards the project positives and weigh them against the potential negatives or detriments. Based on all of the testimony, I believe all of the relief that's listed in Mr. Barry's report can be granted without any substantially adverse impacts. You've got a front yard setback here, which relates to the irregular shape of the site, the triangular shape. It facilitates a free flow of traffic around the site, and this site is sort of anchored and, and, uh, isolated by itself on the corner. Clearly, you have a development pattern that continues down Broad Street with the Vermilla, Vermilla development. Uh, this is distinct and similar to what we see with the Taco Bell on the other side of the street. Likewise, the building height at twenty-three feet is appropriate. If you look at the site from Broadway, you'll be able to look across this building and not interfere with or intrude upon the aesthetic of the Vermilla, uh, development that's immediately adjacent, nor blocking the light air and views out of that development. We talked about ground floor transparency, the trees, the buffer, the overall sign package as being reasonable and appropriate on a site that has multiple vantage, vantage points here, is appropriate for four signs where one would be the maximum that's allowed on the building, again, given the multiplicity of vantage points here to promote clear and safe site identification. Uh, the illumination, I think Vince gave the board the rationale for that as well, in the interest of safety and providing for adequate light without creating objectionable glare. Um, there's some relief related to the pole heights and the aisle width, which for the, the most part are similar to the existing conditions, and actually improving the site overall, um, mitigates any impact associated with that relief. So, all said, this is a good application, um, I think it's been well thought out, and we can certainly find that the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriments. And in that regard, our applicant here has met its burden under the law, and approval is warranted.
John, and John, John's, is the, the fact that we're improving stormwater management and landscaping, I know you're a landscape architect as well, does that further reinforce your conclusions that the positive criteria and the negative criteria are met?
Yes, it does.
All right, and does the fact that we're bringing many of the existing non-conformities into further conformance and meeting the other regulations, putting signage aside, demonstrate that we do not substantially impair the intended purpose of the zone plan?
That is correct as well.
All right, so you believe that the positive criteria has been met, the negative criteria has been met, and that the benefits of granting the variances associated with the project would substantially outweigh any detriments?
Yes, to all of the above.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald, thank you, guys. Um, board, any questions or comments for the plan? Hearing the, are any questions or comments from the public?
I do see one raise his hand.
All right, let's bring that person in. Who's wanting in, Mr. Beck? Where is the gentleman?
Good evening, Mr. Paul Paul. Do you solemnly swear a firm, the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you, please state your name and address for the record.
Chinese relative of Paul, Pavilion Apartments, New York, New Jersey.
Thank you.
So, um, I am not opposed to having a Chick-fil-A. Uh, I like the fact that this is not going to be, uh, 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 inside dining area because of the issues of concern that is going on with Seventh Avenue and some parts of Broadway. But I am concerned about the voting zone, uh, you know, uh, not having that because that means that trucks are going to be coming in at certain times of night. And so, you know, when you're saying that we are having, you know, it's four, four times a week. We do hear when those trucks come in, I mean, we dealt with, uh, almost two years of the Vermilla, you know, having trucks come in at three, dropping off supplies and things like that. So we just want to make sure that there is consideration, not just because Vermilla is there, but you have a, a, uh, two apartment buildings that consist of six hundred and eighty apartments, and these are, uh, you know, families, and the building B will be, you know, probably getting more of the noise and the rebuilding. So I would like for, uh, the, uh, the developers to consider having a set time for them to start the work, a set time to finish the work, and, you know, uh, and think about the quality of life for the surrounding, uh, residents. Uh, the traffic study, it is going to be a problem because, um, even though, uh, I have, uh, I go to Chick-fil-A, like in the one in Linden, and, you know, where the Walmart is, traffic gets backed up. So that means that if people are not moving fast and know what they're going to order, the cars are going to get backed up, and it's going to create a problem. So I think when you're having that one way in, if we can put some type of flashing, like stop, or, you know, being cautious because we have our kids coming out, you know, and they will probably be coming over to Chick-fil-A, you know, the young ones and everything, so I, I would like for that to be a consideration. Um, I think that this project is good because Chick-fil-A is known to have a better, uh, longstanding, uh, uh, you know, not turnover with our younger generation, they seem to enjoy working for Chick-fil-A. So I am asking Chick-fil-A to please consider our New Yorkers, our New York students, our New York young ones, our, and our North residents for this particular, you know, work, to give them, you know, some meaningful. I think that, uh, from what I understand, you guys, the Chick-fil-A offers a very good scholarship program. They encourage, and this is something that especially, I've been here since nineteen ninety-four. Uh, you know, I'm glad that Vermilla is here, they work with the Pavilion, and I, I hope that Chick-fil-A will, you know, work with Pavilion in terms of when they have their events and et cetera. But we also have to be mindful that this is a community of, you know, of residents, and we want that respect back, uh, put back to us. So, uh, I thank you for thinking about this because now I no longer have to go all the way to Linden or Union or Whitbridge to go to a Chick-fil-A, so this has been a long time coming. And I can go to the Burger King over and buy the other Vermilla. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your concerns, your questions. Are anyone else in the public wishing this could?
Uh, it does not appear so.
Now, Kate, Mr. Barry, just a quick question in terms of the one tree, like bushes they're bringing on the inside, does he give you credit for that?
I, what I'm going to suggest is that we, uh, have the city's tree superintendent review the plans as part of the resolution compliance process, because ultimately the goal is to make sure that the trees are in a location that gives them the best chance to survive and grow to maturity. So I'm going to say that, um, we'll either affirm that that location is acceptable to the tree superintendent, or we'll ask the applicant to relocate the tree, or in the last-case scenario, um, arrange for a planting elsewhere or a contribution to the shade tree fund, but I'm going to put that in the appropriate expert's hand, if that's okay with the board.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. In that case, I need a motion, we'll move her in a second.
I make the motion that we approve the project.
The second motion.
Move by Commissioner Timmons, second by Commissioner Roundtree, roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Commissioner Purdy.
Yes.
Commissioner Baez.
Yes.
Commissioner James. Commissioner James.
And it came up earlier as well, so.
That's it. Commissioner De Silva. Commissioner Scott Roundtree.
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Co-Chair Witcher.
Yes.
Chair Richardson.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, really appreciate it, thank you for the time.
Congratulations, and Chairman, I, I just wanted to say to Mr. Martinez that I was just joking about the fifty percent off, okay?
All, all good, but thank, thank you for your time this evening.
You're welcome, thank you. The application been approved, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barry, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, very briefly, this evening we have an area in need of redevelopment. Investigation for, in the block fifty-seven, lot one sixty-one, it's probably known as twenty dash twenty-four Branford Place. Uh, it's the old, uh, Chamber of Commerce building, and most recently, um, Islamic Center, and now has been vacant for several years. Um, we'll share on the screen, just orient us, sort of the corner of Branford Place and Tree Place. This is a historic structure that is, uh, eleven stories in height, it's, it's really ten stories with a penthouse. Um, it's got some ground floor, commercial storefrontage that is currently, um, covered with scaffolding, or at least it was as of a couple of weeks ago. The building itself, um, has been underutilized for some time as far as the, the overall square footage goes. As I said, the Islamic Society of Essex County was a long-term occupant of several spaces within the building, but as far as the whole square footage and the upper floors, there, there's substantial vacancy for a number of years. The, as of, uh, twenty twenty-one, the, the, the building is completely vacant. The Islamic Society, uh, located, relocated about a block and a half away on Hill Street, two blocks away or so, and the building has been, been vacant since that time. There was an application before the planning board to convert the bulk of the building, the former office space, into residential units, that project has, has not yet moved forward. Uh, the intention, I believe, continues to be to undertake a mixed-use adaptive reuse project in the building and preserve the historic character of the structure. Uh, part of this redevelopment study is part of trying to forward that, the process to get the, get the ball rolling. So in short, the property meets criterion B of the local redevelopment housing law. I have some photographs from twenty twenty-two and some photographs here from twenty twenty-four, a little over two years apart, showing the same vacancy at the ground floor level, and which is carried out through the rest of the building. In fact, you can see the sign, um, the twenty twenty-two photo was a, was a banner sign from the Islamic Center advising folks that they had relocated. So, um, based on the criterion of the local redevelopment housing law, criterion B is met. It's a former commercial property that has been vacant for a period of at least two years. It's been, uh, substantially vacant for far longer than that, but it's been completely vacant for about three years now. And quite simply, it's a, you know, open and shut case as far as the criteria goes. It's, uh, self-evident that the building is vacant and has been vacant, and therefore it meets the criteria. So I think so, any questions that the board may have?
I have a question.
Especially the co-chair, Witcher.
Thank you, Chair Richardson. Mr. De Barry, who are, are the same folks owning the property, who's going to benefit from this, um, designation?
So the, the current owner of record is a LLC, Twenty Branford LLC. Um, that's a subsidiary of, subsidiary of Paramount Assets, who has been the owner, as far as I know, since, uh, I believe it's since twenty twenty. The, uh, they were, at the time, they were the entity that made the application to the planning board, uh, several years ago for the conversion of the building.
And then if we approve this move, then what happens with regards to the project?
Sure, if the board, um, the board's charges to, to review the, the testimony and the report indicate whether that the board agrees that it meets the criteria. If the board makes a recommendation to the city council that the criteria for redevelopment are met, the council can then act on a resolution that would designate the area in need of redevelopment. And this is non-condemnation area, I don't believe I mentioned that from the beginning. Um, so the board's in an advisory position here, essentially reviewing the, establishing and reviewing the record during this meeting, making a recommendation to the city council, and then from there, if the council designates the area in need of redevelopment, then it opens the possibility of utilizing the redevelopment powers, including long-term tax abatement, redevelopment area bonds, and other tools of that nature.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, co-chair, for the question. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing the, are there any questions or comments for the board?
Now that's his time.
In that case, I need a motion. I make a motion to approve. Move back to Commissioner Timmons?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Purdy, roll the call, Mr. Secretary.
Commissioner Purdy.
Yes.
Commissioner Baez. Commissioner Baez.
No.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree. Commissioner Scott Roundtree. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Co-Chair Witcher.
No.
Chair Richardson.
Yes.
Mr. Barry, do we, Mr. Beck? Do we get everybody, Mr. Chair?
Uh, Commissioner Scott Roundtree, I called, but she did not respond.
Hold on.
Oh, Commissioner De Silva is here as well?
Uh, yes.
Your, your vote is yes?
Yes.
I'm sorry, so where are we? Vote count.
Uh, we have four yeses, two nos.
So then it passes.
Yes, thank you, thank you, John.
Yes, if you guys can hear me.
We can now.
Commissioner Roundtree, okay, Commissioner Roundtree, all right. Let's, um, Mr. Beck, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have three resolutions to be memorialized this evening. Two are from the last meeting on May twenty, May twentieth, excuse me. First one being C P B twenty-three seventy, five-ten South Avenue, South Orange Avenue. C P B twenty-three dash eighty-nine, forty-one dash forty-seven Astor Street. And this evening's, uh, extension, C P B twenty-one twenty-five, which was four eighteen Avon Avenue. Uh, all those commissioners that voted affirmatively to memorialize are permitted to do same. Any of those who wish to put on the record that they oppose, please do so, if not, these will be memorialized this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. We've got a draw for, oh, do we have meeting, uh, minutes, no minutes, no meeting minutes? Yeah, minutes.
Yeah, can you repeat that, Chairman?
Minutes, a meeting minutes, so if everyone had an opportunity to do the minutes.
Yes.
Any corrections or concerns or comments? Here we go, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Can I get that again?
Oh, motion to approve.
Moved by Mr. Timmons, second.
Second.
By Mr. Commissioner Paul, roll call, Mr. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, next meeting is June twenty-fourth, six PM. Please stay safe out there, everyone, we'll see you on the twenty-fourth. Have a good night.
And happy Father's Day to every wonderful town.
Happy Father's Day to all the brothers. God bless you all, love you.
Have a good night.